Oh, wow.
So Sam, you've never presented before us yet, right?
Not yet.
We're very nice. Don't be afraid of us.
We're on a time constraint, you know that, right?
Are we?
Yeah.
We have an over-under going on.
Have you heard that? Did I say forty-two? Dean's welcome.
Yeah, I didn't get that other email. It's okay, I already sent her an email telling her that I will be attending. But I, I got the agenda. That was the last email I got from her. That was Monday or Tuesday? Yeah, Tuesday.
What kind of restaurant is that?
Let me see.
Oh, it is. Oh, I didn't see that.
Where's that?
I was looking for it, I didn't see.
What's that one? Oh, yes, yes, and I talked to friends that live down there. I was hoping this is gonna have one of those revolving sushi bars that kind of like the food just keeps on going by you.
Is that where it was? I didn't see it written down. Well, usually you can tell by the name of it, like L something or other.
Well, if you look at the name carefully, it's Zoo and Shi.
Yeah, it sounds like Chinese or something.
Like if it, like it's a fusion or something, you know?
There's been a lot of places in that, in that.
Oh, she sent it to my regular email.
Yes.
I didn't, I wasn't looking for that. I don't get, I don't get notifications from there for some reason. Yes, I wasn't forgotten.
Are we gonna be good to start at seven? He's supposed to be virtual.
Yes, the beaches, here it is.
Yeah.
Because it's not even down here, like it's not.
Yeah. Oh, there's Drew. Hello.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hi, Drew.
Okay, nobody turned on a fan?
Any sight of Jessie yet?
Okay, thank you. Everybody's a little feisty the new year, huh? You didn't see him? He's, he's docked.
I, no, I set the alarm off in that building, but I don't want to turn it off.
Oh, I don't want to turn it off either.
It'll go up and a blue sheet of a call, they can deal with it.
They'll send the sheriff out.
Oh, here we go.
Everybody ready? All right, at this time, I would like to call the Planning Commission meeting for January thirteenth to order and invite everybody to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And item three on our agenda is roll call.
Chair Namath?
Here.
Vice Chair Avery?
Here.
Commissioner Fregasane?
Here.
Commissioner Henderson? Commissioner Smith is not here yet.
No Commissioner Smith at this time. He is supposed to be attending via Zoom, correct? Okay.
He is.
Jessie, if you're listening, join us. All right, item four on our agenda is the review of the agenda.
So we do have one change. This evening, you received a memorandum for item eight B, which is documenting a couple of changes to some findings in the draft resolution.
Okay, thank you very much. Did all of the commissioners see that memo for item eight B?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right, item five, may I please get a motion to waive the full reading of all resolutions on the agenda for this meeting?
Second?
I have a motion from Commissioner Avery and a second from Commissioner Fregasane's. May I please get a voice vote on that?
Chair Namath?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Fregasane?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
All right, let the record reflect that the motion passes with four yes votes and Commissioner Smith absent. Item six on our agenda is public comments on our consent calendar and on any items that are not on our agenda. So if anybody is here to speak on our consent calendar, which consists of approving the minutes of last month, or on anything not on our agenda, please come forward. And I'll check with Miguel, do we have anybody virtually?
We currently have no one with their hands raised.
Okay, thank you so much. That brings us to item seven, our consent calendar. May I get a motion to approve our minutes?
So moved.
Yeah, second?
I have a motion from Commissioner Fregasane's and a second from Commissioner Avery. May we please get a voice roll call on that?
Chair Namath?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Fregasane?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith is absent.
All right, let the record show, the motion cap carries with four yes votes and one absent. All right, that will bring us to our public hearings.
Okay, the first item will be presented by Assistant Planner Sarah Stenick, and give me just a moment to share my screen.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Before you this evening is a request to establish California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control Type forty-seven license for the sale and consumption of beer, wine, and spirits at a proposed bona fide restaurant located at four twenty-two West Rancho Vista Boulevard. Ceviche Sushi Bar will take over a vacant restaurant space located within a developed shopping center. The project is, is located within the planned development zone of the Palmdale Trade and Commerce Center specific plan, and the proposed alcohol use is permitted subject to review and approval of a conditional use permit application. No exterior modifications are proposed. The project is considered a bona fide restaurant with alcohol sales because the kitchen will be open at all hours of operation, patrons will not be, will not be served while standing at a counter, and no more than ten percent of the floor area will be used for the sale, display, or storage of alcohol. No dance floor or recreational activities are proposed. The applicant is proposing to operate the establishment from eleven AM to ten PM, Sunday through Thursday, and to be open an hour later on Fridays and Saturdays. Per the Palmdale Municipal Code, the Planning Commission may consider the following to determine if a conditional use permit should be approved: whether the proposed use would result in an over-intensification of alcoholic beverage establishments, would be located in a high-crime area, other information about the surrounding area, and the hours of operation. The two methods to determine over-intensification are population density and retail density. The population density method compares the number of licenses to the population in the city to the number in population within the subject census tract. There are current nine, there are currently ninety-nine on-sale retail ABC licenses within the city of Palmdale and twenty-three within the census tract. Using the population density method, there is currently an over-intensification of on-sale establishments because there is one license for every hundred, hundred ninety-two people within the census tract and for every seventeen hundred twelve people citywide. With the proposed use, there will be a hundred on-sale retail ABC licenses within the city and twenty-four within the, within the census tract. As the project site is located within a census tract with a higher proportion of commercial and industrial areas to residential areas than most of the city, a higher concentration of businesses with alcohol licenses is expected. As such, staff believes the proposed location is appropriate and not inconsistent with the municipal code. The second method to determine over-intensification is the retail density method, which considers an over-intensification to occur when the number of licenses within a twenty-five-hundred, hundred-foot radius of the proposed site exceeds the average number of licenses within a twenty-five-hundred-foot radius of a sample of twenty randomly selected on-sale establishments located within commercial areas of the city. Using this method, the site would not have an over-intensification because there is an average of nine licenses within the radius of the sample locations and six within the radius of the project site. Next, a high-crime area is defined as an area with a crime rate of a hundred twenty percent of the citywide average. This map shows the crimes that occurred within the crime reporting district in which the project site is located. This reporting district would be considered a high-crime area because it exhibits a crime rate of nearly three times the citywide average. However, according to the LA County Sheriff's Department, there were six calls for service reported at or near the site from December twenty-twenty to December twenty-twenty-one, only one of which, only one of which was alcohol-related. And the Sheriff's Department has not indicated any opposition to the approval of this conditional use permit. Additionally, this project complies with all location standards for bona fide restaurants with alcohol sales as specified within the specific plan and the Palmdale Municipal Code. And with that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number twenty-two-two-dash-one, approving conditional use permit twenty-one-five, and find that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stenick. Do any of our commissioners, oh, hi Jessie.
Oh, there he is.
Good to see you.
Hi, everybody. My, I could not find the link, I'm sorry.
Okay, but you got to hear the presentation, correct?
I did, yes, thank you, yes.
Let the record reflect that Commissioner Smith is now in attendance and was here for the public hearing of item eight A. Do any commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? All righty, then at this time, I will open the public hearing on this item, and if anybody is here to speak on this item, please come forward and state your name, and you will have three minutes to speak. Being no one, is there anybody with their hand raised in the virtual world?
We have one person with their hand raised. Brett Ingstrom, feel free to unmute yourself.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
I am with the applicant. I'm here on behalf of Ceviche Sushi Bar, which is excited to be opening their newest location at four twenty-two West Rancho Vista. We have applied for a conditional use permit to allow the sale of a full line of alcohol for onsite consumption at the new full-service restaurant. This will be Ceviche's fourth location. They operate restaurants in Silmar, Santa Clarita, and Northridge. This new location will occupy an eight thousand five hundred and eighty-square-foot tenant space and offer a hundred and forty-eight patron seats. Proposed hours of operation, eleven AM to ten PM, Sunday through Thursday, eleven AM to eleven PM, Friday and Saturday. The applicants have also applied to the Department of ABC for a Type forty-seven license, which allows the sale of a full line of alcohol at a bona fide eating establishment. Each of the Ceviche locations hold an ABC license, and they have an excellent record of compliance with the ABC. I wanted to thank planning staff for all their work in preparing this request for hearing. We have reviewed the staff report and find the draft conditions acceptable. With that, I'd like to turn it back to the commissioners if there's any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ingstrom. Do any planning commissioners have questions for the applicant at this time?
No.
Okay, well, I want to thank you, Mr. Ingstrom, for being so well-prepared and keeping it in a good timeframe and answering any question I might have had for you, so thank you. I appreciate that. All right, is there anybody else in, with their hand raised to speak on this item?
No more at this time.
Okay, then if there is no objection, I shall close the public hearing on this item and ask for commissioner discussion or a motion on the item.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution PC twenty-two-two-dash-zero-zero-one, approving CUP twenty-one-dash-zero-zero-five and find that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Avery.
Make us, I'll second that.
I have a second from Commissioner Fregasane's. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, then at this time, we will take a voice vote on the motion. Chair Namath? Yes. Vice Chair Avery?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
All right, let the record reflect that the motion passes with five yes votes. And congratulations to our applicant, and we look forward to dining in your new establishment in the near future. That will bring us to item eight B.
And this item will be presented by Assistant Planner Sam Dominguez.
Welcome, Sam.
Thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners. This is a request for conditional use permit twenty-one-dash-zero-zero-six. I pointed it in the right direction. The applicant has submitted a request for a conditional use permit for the continued operation of a previously approved major wireless telecommunications facility. The project site is located at three-nine-seven-two-four Thirtieth Street West within Marie Care Park. The application proposes no physical changes to the existing facility. The facility was originally approved by the Planning Commission on October fourteen, two thousand nine, for a period of ten years through conditional use permit nine-dash-fourteen. Pursuant to the Palmdale Municipal Code, wireless facilities expire after ten years. This facility has expired as of two thousand nineteen. The owner now would like to continue the use for another ten years. There are no physical alterations to the facility being proposed at this time. The plan submitted shows the existing facility and associated two hundred and thirty-four square-foot ground-mounted equipment enclosure located at the northern end of the site. The parcel on which the existing facility is located does have direct access to Avenue O-12. You can see that to the north. For ongoing maintenance purposes, the project will continue to take access from Avenue O-12 through the existing access easement. The existing major wireless telecommunications facility is fifty-eight feet high with a two hundred and thirty-four square-foot ground-mounted equipment enclosure. The facility complies with a maximum height of sixty-five feet permissible with the CUP. The existing facility is mounted on a field light pole. The enclosure is surrounded by an approximately eight-foot-high neutral-colored block wall and a gable roof that matches the existing structures in the park. The facility and enclosure are located within the perimeter chain-link fencing surrounding the park. Neither the existing major wireless telecommunications facility nor the surrounding area have significantly changed since originally developed. With that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution approving CUP twenty-one-dash-six as amended and find that the project is consistent with the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for CUP nine-dash-fourteen. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dominguez. Do any of the commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? Okay, then I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If anybody is here to speak on this item, please step forward, state your name, and you'll have three minutes. All righty, seeing nobody. I'm gonna guess that Travis Wells is representing our applicant. Hi Travis, welcome. Do you have anything you want to say to the commission at this time, Mr. Wells? We can't hear you. But you are unmuted, that's interesting.
I don't know either sign language.
Can't hear you, Dean. Miguel, what happened? Jessie, I can't hear you either.
Everybody's trying to test it.
I can hear no one.
Yeah, I can hear Travis just.
There you go, okay. Now I can hear you. Okay, Travis, try again, I'm sorry.
How about now?
Yes.
Oh, great.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is a, a pretty standard CUP, CUP renewal. I really don't have much to say. Thank you.
All right, do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant? All righty, I would like to thank you for making it semi-stealth by putting it on a light pole. That's one of my pet peeves, so I do appreciate that. All right, and is there anybody else online to speak on this item, Miguel?
No raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's nobody else, then if there's no objection, I would like to close the public hearing on this item and open it up for commissioner discussion and/or a motion.
And make a motion to adopt Resolution Number PC twenty-two-two-dash-zero-zero-two, approving the conditional use permit twenty-one-dash-zero-zero-six and find that the project is consistent with the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration and mitigated monitoring and reporting program.
A second to motion?
Okay, just to clarify the motion, Commissioner Fregasane's, that is as amended, correct?
As amended.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I have a motion from Commissioner Fregasane's and a second from Commissioner Smith. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, then may we please have a voice roll call vote on that? Yes.
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 That me?
Yes.
Oh, yes. It's hard to hear you.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Smith's turn.
Yes.
All right, let the record show that the motion passes with five yes votes. Thank you very much. All right, and that will bring us to item eight C.
This item will be presented by Assistant Planner Jasmine Alvarado.
Three different presenters tonight, that's exciting.
We like to spread the wealth.
Starting the new year right, right? All righty, good evening, planning commissioner. Before you this evening is environmental document number twenty-one-dash-zero-zero-one. Sorry. The applicant has prepared an addendum to the mitigated negative declaration for tentative track map seven-three-zero-six-eight pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines to address minor technical changes to the project in order to comply with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife permit requirements and regulations. As shown on the aerial map, the project site is located south of Palmdale Boulevard and approximately six hundred and thirty feet west of Fifty-Fifth Street East. Tentative track map seven-three-zero-six-eight was approved by the Planning Commission January fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen for the subdivision of approximately twenty-acre site into seventy-five lots for the purpose of constructing single-family residence. The tentative track map is valid and has an expiration date of January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. On September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty, the CDFW voted to declare the Western Joshua Tree as a candidate species under the provisions of California Endangered Species Act for one year while the agency conducts a study to consider formal protection under the law. Since the Western Joshua Tree is now protected under CISA, the applicant must apply for an incidental take permit through CDFW pursuant to Fishing, Fishing Game Code Section twenty-eighty-one-B for impacts to Western Joshua Trees on-site. While there are no proposed changes to the project as approved through tentative track map seven-three-zero-six-eight, the addendum addresses changes to, changes in state regulations relating to Western Joshua Trees and is a necessary component of the ITP application. In conclusion, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution and find that the project will require minor clarifications as outlined within the addendum prepared to the previously adopted MND for tentative track map seven-three-zero-six-eight. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Alvarado. Do any of the commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? All right, then I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If anybody is here to speak on this item, please come forward and state your name, and you will have three minutes to share with us.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Is this someone?
Yeah.
On behalf of Revelo Holdings and Mr. Phil Ram.
We can't hear him too well on Zoom.
Is that, is that better?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, on behalf of Revelo Holdings and the CEO, Phil Ram, who's with us today, I just wanted to thank staff and specifically Megan Taggart and Jasmine Alvarado for helping us navigate this process, and would be happy to answer any questions and. Here for you, so thank you.
Perfect. Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant? Okay.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and is there anybody with their hand raised?
No hands raised at this time.
Thank you very much. And if there is objection, I will close the public hearing on this item and open it up for commissioner discussion or a motion on the item.
I'll make a motion. I'd like to adopt Resolution PC twenty-two-two-dash-zero-zero-three and find that the project will require minor clarifications as outlined within the addendum ENV twenty-one-dash-zero-zero-one prepared to the previous approved, adopted mitigated negative declaration for TTM seven-three-zero-six-eight.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Avery and a second from Commissioner Henderson. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, then we will call for a voice vote on this item.
Chair Namath?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Fregasane?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
All right, let the record reflect that the motion passes with five yes votes, and thank you very much for being with us this evening. That will bring us to item nine on our agenda, staff communications.
We do have a couple of things this evening. The first is, you did receive a couple of other memos before the meeting. The first is for the twenty-twenty-two California League of Cities Planning Commissioners Conference that's going to be in March. So we hope you can all attend, and please let Lynn know as soon as possible so we can get everybody up there who can go. The second is our tentative agenda for February, so we do have several items on that agenda as well, some conditional use permits, general plan amendment, and some besting tentative track maps along with a plan development document. And then I did want to point out that, as you all know, we're working on our comprehensive update to our general plan. We have now started also our zoning code update, so we're in the early stages of our analysis. You'll probably start seeing some flyers, and there's some information on the general plan webpage that will take you to the zoning code update webpage. plan webpage that will take you to the zoning code update webpage so that we can get some community input and feedback on the process moving forward.
All right, wonderful, thank you very much. Mr. Pletcher, do you have any communications on your end of things?
Nothing this evening, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, that brings us to item 10, Planning Commission Communications. Do any of our planning commissioners have anything to share? I do want to say I did see the first zoning code update informational graphic in the Palmdale Connections, I think, today, so I just thought, good job, get it out there. Also, I do know that the city is asking for input from citizens regarding the proposed regional recreation center. So if you go to the city's website, you can find that and hopefully get some, put your opinions in there as to what you'd like for a regional recreation center in our community. So with that, do you want me to wait a bit, Bart, so we're closer to the time you wanted to get out of here?
Only a clock shot.
All right, then, with that, I shall adjourn our meeting to our regular meeting of Thursday, February 10th at 7:00. Thank you.
Hi, everybody.